Good evening and welcome to the July 8, 2020 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meeting. Before we get started, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that our overhead is not going to be working tonight, but the videos are being shown on our television broadcast. Pursuant to Paragraph 42 of Executive Order N-08-21 executed by the Governor of California on June 11, 2021, and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the Planning Commission meeting will allow members of the public to participate and address the planning commission during the open session of the meeting. Public comment may be submitted by telephone during the meeting and prior to the close of the public comment on an agenda item by calling 916-774-5353. If you call, you may be placed on hold until the attendant can answer. The broadcast is delayed by up to 30 seconds when watching at home. When your call is transferred, you will have three minutes for public comment on items not on the agenda and five minutes in which to speak to a regular agenda item. Your time will be monitored and you will be informed when you have one minute left to conclude your comments. If you're listening to the meeting while calling in, please turn down the volume on the meeting in order to avoid interference. When calling, please do not use the speakerphone option as it may create difficulty for the Planning Commission to hear your comments. I will now call the meeting to order. Loopy, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Caparuso?
Here.
Commissioner Covington?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Pryor?
Here.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Here.
And Chair Brashears?
Here. And Vice Chair Jensen, would you please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May we have staff introductions?
Yes. Loopy Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Joseph Speaker, Assistant City Attorney. Good evening, Chair Brashears and Commissioners. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Chair Brashears and Commissioners. Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Sean Morales, Assistant Planner.
Good evening, Matt Todd, Principal Engineer.
I have to say, I wasn't at the last meeting. It's great to see everybody in person. Nice to be back. Now is the time for public comments. Public comments is a time for anyone who would like to address the commission on an item not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. When addressing the commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Greg, are we handling?
We're doing both in person or on the phone tonight.
And still giving it the thirty?
Yeah, about 30 seconds for the delay, yeah.
Great.
Chair Brashears, it looks like there's no phone call, public comments tonight.
Okay. And seeing no public comments in person, hearing none, I will now close the public comment period. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff report. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, the planning commission, or staff. To request that a consent item be considered separately, the public may call at 916-774-5353. Tonight's consent calendar consists of two items. Item 5.1, the minutes from the June 10, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, and item 5.2, Southeast Roseville Specific Plan Parcel 3 Kaiser Temporary Parking Lot 2131 Douglas Boulevard, file number PL21-0121. Is there anyone from the public who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar
Chair Brashears, there are no phone calls asking for an item to be removed from the consent calendar.
Thank you, Greg. Would any of my fellow commissioners like to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion?
I just have a comment. So in the minutes on item 6.2, the roll call, Commissioner Pryor's labeled twice, and one of them should be me instead, so it's just a comment item, whoever approves it. To make a modification of item 6.2 roll call.
Okay. Referring to item 5.1 on the consent calendar.
Correct.
Sure. Okay. Noted. If there is no one else who'd like to pull?
There's a, I have one too, just an edit to the minutes. There's a, under Commissioner Discussion, under 6.2, the third bullet, first sentence should be products instead of projects.
Loopy, have you got those notes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If there is nothing else, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as noted with the edits?
I'll make a motion with the notes.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Martin has made a motion and Commissioner Caparuso has seconded the motion. Loopy, may we have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
And Chair Brashears.
Yes. The motion is approved. Next on our agenda is requests and presentations, and before we begin, I would like to review the meeting procedures. First, we will hear the staff presentation, then I will take questions from the commission. I will then open the public hearing and the applicant will have, make a presentation. I will then open public comments and the public will have an opportunity to speak. I will then close public comments. The applicant will be given an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. I will then close the public hearing and the commission may ask questions of staff. Finally, the commission will consider this item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. As a reminder, public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. If you call, you may be placed on hold until staff can answer. When addressing the commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. First is item 6.1, and this is a request to approve a conditional use permit and design review permit for 5850 Five Star Boulevard, for the record, file number PL21-0073. And Sean, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, you may. And do you see my presentation on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening again, Chair Brashears and Commissioners. My name is Sean Morales. I'm an Assistant Planner and I'm here tonight to present the Turbo Shine Car Wash Project. The project site is located at 5850 Five Star Boulevard, which is on Parcel 44 of the Highland Reserve North Specific Plan. The site is 1.25 acres in area and has a land use and zoning designation of community commercial. The site is currently undeveloped and is surrounded on all sides by commercial uses. The current proposal is for a 3,588 square foot automatic car wash facility, and the entitlements requested include a conditional use permit to allow a car wash in the community commercial zone and a design review permit to evaluate the elevations and site plan. Car wash facilities are considered conditionally permitted in the community commercial zone and the CUP process allows the commission to put operational conditions on the project to mitigate potential impacts to surrounding properties. Operational noise can be an issue for some car washes, however, this project's site is located 1,200 feet from the nearest sensitive noise receptor and the project operations will generate noise below the city's thresholds. The applicant proposes to operate from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. seven days a week. The CUP process allows the commission to restrict activities that can take place on site, however, this building was purpose-built for this unique use and the applicant has provided a detailed operational description, so that shouldn't be an issue. The site frontage includes one shared driveway at the southeastern edge of the property and one unshared driveway at the northwestern edge of the property, and there are two carport structures with a total of 14 vacuum spaces. The zoning ordinance requires at least 100 linear feet of stacking and the applicant has provided 220 linear feet among two lanes. The building colors and materials were chosen to complement the surrounding developments, including white with red accents like the Les Schwab to the north and split-faced masonry walls like the Stamford Crossing Shopping Center to the east. The curved nature of the frontage creates line-of-sight concerns and limits the height of landscaping that can be used to shield the carport areas. So the applicant has proposed to use a green screen wall to provide solid screening for the vehicles in the carport areas. So in conclusion, staff finds the project is consistent with the general plan, specific plan, zoning ordinance, and community design guidelines, and the required findings can be made for the requested entitlements. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission adopt the three findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit subject to two conditions of approval and adopt the four findings of fact and approve the design review permit subject to 79 conditions of approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Sean. And Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question. The noise, obviously, you know, we're way far away from a residential neighborhood, but I know that there are other car washes that, when you have commercial adjacent to it, there's some noise issues with the adjacent commercial properties, and there being a drive-through next to it, adjacent to the site across the street. What's the, do we know any decimal levels at that location with respect to the site? And then I know there's a trash enclosure that's kind of blocking or will deflect some of the noises. And then across the other direction is more commercial development across from the parking lot, but just people coming in and out of the stores. I know car washes aren't, the dryers, the blowers are kind of noisy. I do some design, so we, I hear these items when they come up, so it's just something that I want to raise a question to, to see if we know any adjacent decimal levels or...
The applicant might be able to speak more to specifics on the adjacent area. We were looking more at the sensitive receptors, the residential, but the applicant might have more detail on that when they speak.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay. I will now open the public hearing and I'd like to invite the representative for this item to address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Michael. I'm with Poli Architecture representing the applicant. We did look at the sounds, not sound study. We don't have a specific sound study done for this. It wasn't a requirement, but what we did do was we enclosed all the vacuums interior to the building, so it's all insulated, to reduce the sound levels as much as possible. The equipment itself runs at 83 decibels, but it's inside the building, like I said. And if you look, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but the room is actually on the southwest corner of the building, so it's as far away from the adjacent parking lots as it could be.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the project representative this time?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I will now open public comments. Public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353, and as a reminder, you will have five minutes to address the commission on this item. And Greg, we'll wait to see if we have any phone calls.
Chair Brashears, it looks like there are no public comment phone calls for this item
And seeing none here, I will now close the public comment. And as there were no public comments, there's nothing for the applicant to address. Commissioners, any, are there any further comments or discussions? Commissioner Martin, was your question sufficiently answered?
It gave enough information. I mean, obviously, it's enclosed, the blowers are enclosed, but they, I mean, they are noisy and when you have a, an opening like that, it projects the noise, but I mean, there's nothing you can really do about it. I mean, they've done their due diligence in moving it away from the site and projecting it in a location that's least noisy to the neighbors, and they have a deflector with trash enclosure. There's trees along, and that'll also help deflect some of the noise, and you have lines of sight that you need, so it's, it is what it is on the site. It's a good, it's a good fit for the site.
Any other questions or comments from fellow Commissioners? I will now close the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to make a motion.
I'll move to adopt the three findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit subject to two conditions of approval and adopt the four findings of fact and approve the design review permit subject to 79 conditions of approval.
Second.
Commissioner Caparuso has made the motion and Commissioner Jensen has seconded the, Vice Chair Jensen has seconded the motion. Loopy, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
And Chair Brashears?
Yes. This motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Next on our agenda is item 6.2. This is a request to adopt the Green Acres Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program and approve design review permit and voluntary merger at 7300 Galilee Road. For the record, file number PL21-0067. And Shelby, may we please have your presentation?
Chair Brashears, excuse me. I need to recuse myself from this item due to a conflict of interest with the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Chair Brashears and Commissioners. My name is Shelby Maples and I have a presentation for you on the Green Acres Nursery and Supply Design Review Permit and Voluntary Merger located at 7300 Galilee Road. The project site is located on Galilee Road on the southwest side of the intersection of Industrial Avenue and Washington Boulevard in the city's north industrial plan area. The site is currently undeveloped with a land use designation of general commercial and a zoning designation of community commercial. The subject parcels are surrounded by industrial uses to the northeast and west with a DMV branch located immediately to the south. A single-family residential neighborhood is located to the east of Washington Boulevard with the nearest residential rear yard approximately 200 feet to the east of the property boundary. The property was purchased by the city's redevelopment agency in 2007 with the intent to lease a portion to the United States Postal Service for a distribution center. However, following the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, land was turned over to the city. The city then declared the land surplus in 2019, and in 2020, the city council executed a purchase and sale agreement with Tam Elk Grove LLC with the intent to develop a Green Acres Nursery and Supply. In addition, approximately 40,000 square feet of right-of-way along Industrial Avenue were abandoned by the city and sold to Tam Elk Grove LLC to be landscaped and maintained in perpetuity. The project request is for a design review permit and a voluntary merger to support the proposed Green Acres project. The main retail space is indoors and connects to a houseplant greenhouse and open-sided greenhouse. Adjacent to the open greenhouse is the Laugh House, which is an outdoor display area with a wood trellis structure to provide shade. The outdoor display area has no covering and is located on the corner of the property closest to the intersection of Industrial and Washington Boulevard. The total area of retail space and outdoor display is approximately 152,000 square feet. The project includes three driveways with access from Galilee Boulevard and 251 parking spaces are provided on the site, which exceeds the minimum required 231 spaces. No parking will be permitted along the east side of Galilee Road and there is no access provided from Industrial. As proposed, the project complies with all required development standards in the north industrial plan area with regard to setbacks, lot coverage, and building height, as well as landscape requirements. On your next slide, you can see the elevations for the front of the proposed retail building and the adjacent greenhouse and laugh structure, and I've also included some photos of existing stores to kind of show what those areas will look like. Design elements for the main building include corrugated metal siding, tan vertical siding, and a combination of earth-toned building colors to create a barn-inspired facade. Barn doors and crooked-necked lighting fixtures enhance agricultural theme, and the mix of colors, materials, and overall design is consistent with the community design guidelines. The proposed project also includes a voluntary merger of several parcels to facilitate the development. The proposed project will merge three parcels and the abandoned right-of-way along Industrial to create the resultant parcels. The image in your slides shows the lot lines in red with the resultant parcels shown in green. Parcel 9 will remain in its current configuration and the end result will have the project on two parcels. The request is consistent with the subdivision design standards and the city's subdivision ordinance. I'd also like to note that there are a couple of easements, one for sewer and water and one for storm drainage that will be abandoned through a separate process to city council. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. The analysis resulted in mitigation measures for pre-construction nesting bird surveys as well as measures to ensure proper procedure in the event of discovery of subserviced cultural and tribal cultural resources. With those mitigation measures in place, impacts were found to be less than significant. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the general plan, north industrial plan area, zoning ordinance, and community design guidelines, and the required findings for the design review permit and voluntary merger can be made. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the Green Acres Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, adopt the findings of fact and approve the design review permit subject to 74 conditions of approval, and adopt the findings of fact and approve the voluntary merger subject to eight conditions of approval. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Shelby. And Commissioners, are there any questions for Shelby or staff at this time?
I just had one quick question, if I could, and it's for you, Matt. I was looking at the conditions of approval and I saw that putting sidewalk in along Industrial and on Washington, and I just want to clarify, so that includes curb and gutter along the frontage as well and taking that bump out at the intersection of Washington Industrial?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I will now open the public hearing and I'd like to invite the representative for this item to address the commission.
Hi. I'm Corinda McDonald with Borges Architectural Group, representing the applicants from Green Acres, and we've been working with Shelby. We've read through all the conditions of approval and we concur with those, and if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you very much, Corinda. Commissioners, are there any questions for the project applicant at this time? Okay. Thank you. I will now open public comments. Public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. As a reminder, you'll have five minutes to address the commission on this item, and Greg, we'll give it some time for the phones. Anyone who would like to approach may do so now. Anyone who would like to approach may do so now. Chair Beshears, there are no phone call public comments for this item tonight. Thank you, Greg. I will now close the public comment. And ask my fellow commissioners if there are... Oh, actually, I'm sorry. As there was no public comment, there's nothing for the applicant to address. And I will also now close public hearing, and then ask my fellow commissioners if there are any further comments or discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. And we adopt the Green Acres Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, adopt the four findings of fact, and approve the design review permit subject to the 74 conditions of approval, and adopt the four findings of fact and approve the voluntary merger subject to the eight conditions of approval.
Second.
Commissioner Martin has made the motion, and Commissioner Covington has seconded the motion. Lupe, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Chair Beshears?
Yes.
The motion is approved, and there is a 10-day appeal period for the conditional use permit and design review permit.
Grab John.
I'll go grab him.
Oh, we're getting John back, yeah.
Thank you. I'm, for one, excited about this.
Yes, I think it's...
Me as well.
Many in the public, including my wife.
Yes. Can't wait to spend the money.
And get the credit cards ready.
Right, I know. It's too close to home. Way too close. I have not said Commissioner Covington yet, so... I'm wrong.
That's all right, thanks.
Go on record and say congratulations again. We've got Commissioner Pryor back.
And then Joe Wentz is out over there for his presentation.
Oh, he's gearing up, okay. Because next on our agenda are board member commissioner and staff reports. First is item 7.1, Senate Bill 330, Housing Crisis Act of 2019 informational item. And Joe, may we please have your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, playing a little game of musical chairs.
Let me jump in real quick. Chair Beshears, I want to give just a quick overview of why we've asked Joe to give this presentation to the commission. As you know, and Joe will get into the SB 330, but the state legislature continues, has passed a wide variety of housing legislation in the past several years. They're continuing to pass new housing legislation, and we expect that to keep going in the future. So this topic, this first briefing is something that I think is going to be an ongoing topic that you're going to hear about on a more continual basis from us. You already know that you've had several projects over the last six to nine months where we've referenced some of the findings that would have to be made in order to deny a project, a housing project, or reduce density on a housing project based on SB 330. We've had that in your staff reports, and we've talked about it. But we've never kind of given you an overview of that entire package and how that Senate bill fits into what's known as the Housing Accountability Act, which is a broader umbrella of legislation in the California Government Code governing housing and governing how cities can regulate housing. So this is kind of a first snapshot of this particular legislation, package of legislation, and you're going to be hearing about it more. You know, we have the housing element that's coming up before the planning commission at their next meeting for recommendation. We expect more housing legislation that we're going to have to talk to you about. And then also, we have the housing element is going to have probably a three-year, I guess, voyage of implementation, I will describe it by. We're going to have, we have a lot of implementation to do that will be coming before you. So this topic is going to be a regular recurring theme for the planning commission. So I'll let Joe start off with this portion. But I just want to kind of set the table for the upcoming, not just year, but years of dealing with these topics because they're important. You know, and we'll talk about it later, the Fidament Bungalows, the Belvedere, Mercy Housing. You know, we've had several projects that are affected by this legislation. So I'll let Joe take it away on the specifics of SB 330.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. So commissioners, Joseph Speaker, your assistant city attorney, here to talk about Senate Bill 330. So it should be on the first slide. If I can give you SB 330 in a nutshell, it's housing, 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 with some limited exceptions. Next slide, please. So to kind of understand why SB 330, it's important to understand how we got here. So in SB 330, the legislature made several findings. They specifically found that California is experiencing a housing supply crisis with housing demand far exceeding supply. California needs an estimated 180,000 additional residential homes annually to keep up with population growth. California's cost of living is very high, with seven of the top highest real estate markets being in California. The legislature found that California's overall homeownership rate is the lowest rate that it's been since the 1940s. And the legislature found that this excess cost of the state's housing supply is partially caused by policies of local governments. So enter SB 330. The legislature was extremely clear about its intent. The intent is to increase residential unit development, protect and expand existing housing inventory, and expedite permit and application processing. Next slide, please. So on October 9, 2019, Governor Newsom signed the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 into law, commonly known as SB 330, to respond to the California's declared housing crisis. SB 330 expressly applies to charter cities, like the city of Roseville. And under SB 330, local agencies are restricted in what ordinances, regulations, and policies they can apply to housing development projects. And housing development projects are defined under the law to mean a use consisting of two or more residential units, mixed-use developments consisting of residential and non-residential uses, with at least 2/3 of the square footage designated for residential use, and transitional housing or supportive housing, which includes emergency housing. Next slide, please. SB 330 created the new Housing Crisis Act of 2019, but it also modified the Housing Accountability Act, which has been around since 1982, and the Permit Streamlining Act. SB 330 was viewed by the legislature as an emergency act, so most of the changes proposed sunset on January 1, 2025. Next slide, please. Despite the stated goal of SB 330 being to increase housing development and to reduce barriers to housing, it did not eliminate any CEQA obligations. So CEQA is still very much alive with regard to SB 330. Next slide, please. Looking first at the specific amendments made to the Housing Accountability Act, SB 330 prohibits a city from conducting more than five hearings if a proposed housing development project complies with the applicable objective, general plan, and zoning standards in effect at the time an application is deemed complete. It creates a new preliminary application process and requires jurisdictions to compile a checklist of what that process entails. And a preliminary application will be deemed complete by providing specific information related to site characteristics, the planned project, certain environmental concerns, facts related to any potential density bonus, the number of units to be demolished, and the location of recorded public easements. Next slide, please. I know there's a lot of text on this slide, but I think it's important text. The Housing Accountability Act modifications hold that a city can only deny or condition for lower density a proposed housing development project that complies with applicable objective general plan, zoning, and subdivision standards and criteria, which include design review standards, if they make certain written negative findings, supported by a preponderance of the evidence on the record that there is a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety unless they disapprove or condition the project, and that there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact identified, other than the disapproval or conditioning of the housing development project. Next slide, please. SB 330 also modified how cities internally and externally handle new projects and permitting by changing the Permit Streamlining Act. Local agencies must make copies of the mandated application requirements and checklist for a housing development project publicly available on our website. Cities must determine whether a housing development project is a historic site at the time the applicant provides the information required on those checklists, and that determination stays for dependency of the project unless any archaeological resources are encountered. There's also new timelines established under the Permit Streamlining Act modifications. So within 30 days, a city must determine in writing if a development application is complete. Additionally, SB 330 reduced the time for a city to approve or disapprove a project, a housing development project. So we used to have 120 days from EIR certification to approve or disapprove a project. Cities now have 90 days. And if it's an affordable housing project, it's reduced from 90 days to 60 days from the certification of EIR for the city to approve or disapprove. Next slide, please. So now enter the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, the new bill under SB 330. Under that particular Housing Crisis Act, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, takes a much more active role. Next slide, please. There are some key definitions under the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 that are important to know. First, affected city. It's defined to mean a city, including a charter city, that has a population over 5,000, and that HCD determines is in an urbanized area or urban cluster. Spoiler alert, Roseville, along with 450 other cities, have been determined by HCD to be an affected city, so we fall into that. But it also includes the electorate of an affected city. And so what that means is that even voter-approved measures count as the actions of an effective city under the new Housing Crisis Act. Next slide, please. Another key definition is development policy standard or condition, which means any of the following: a provision of or amendment to a general plan, specific plan, zoning ordinance, or a subdivision standard or criteria. Next slide, please. So under the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, for land where housing is in allowable use, an affected city shall not enact a development policy standard or condition that would have the effect of changing the general plan land use designation, specific plan land use designation, or zoning of a parcel or parcels of property to a less intensive use, or reducing the intensity of land use within an existing general plan land use designation, specific plan land use designation, or zoning district below what was allowed under the land use designation and zoning ordinance on January 1, 2018. Next slide, please. Less intensive use is used in that section includes, but is not limited to, reductions to height, density, or floor area ratio, new or increased open space or lot size requirements, new or increased setback requirements, minimum frontage requirements, maximum lot coverage limitations, and anything that would lessen the intensity of housing. Next slide, please. In addition to the previous prohibitions, where land is in allowable use, an effective city shall not enact a development policy standard or condition that would have the effect of imposing or enforcing a design standard established on or after January 1, 2020 that are not objective design standards, establish or implementing any provision that limits the number of land use approvals or permits for construction of housing, that acts as a cap on the number of housing units that can be approved or constructed, or that limits the population of an affected city. So all of those things are prohibited under SB 330. Next slide, please. Additionally, under the Housing Crisis Act, an affected city cannot approve projects that require residential unit demolition unless the project will replace all the existing units, including any affordable units that may be occupied or vacant. And for those affordable units, they have to include at least as many units as existed on the site within the previous five years. Existing residents are allowed to remain until six months after construction begins, and displaced residents are provided relocation benefits and a right of first refusal for a comparable unit in the new project at an affordable rate. Next slide, please. This is the no-net-loss rule. This is the second-to-last section in the new Housing Crisis Act of 2019. So they wait till the very end to give us what is probably the most important carve-out for cities. And that section says that an affected city is not prohibited from changing a land use designation or zoning ordinance to a less intensive use if the city concurrently changes the development standards, policies, and conditions applicable to other parcels within the jurisdiction to ensure that there is no net loss in residential capacity. So that's a really big exception. And concurrently has been clarified by HCD to mean at the same time or immediately proceeding, but in no event after. Next slide, please. There are also some miscellaneous provisions of SB 330 that are worth noting. SB 330's prohibitions would prevail over any conflicting provision in state law. It's the intent of the legislature that SB 330 be broadly construed so as to maximize the development of housing within the state. And any exception to these provisions, including an exception for the health and safety of occupants of a housing development project, must be construed narrowly. Next slide, please. And enforcement of SB 330. We lawyers love enforcement, so I wanted to touch on that. The applicant, a person who would be eligible to apply for residency in the project, or a housing organization, including HCD, may bring an action to enforce SB 330. A court can order specific compliance with SB 330. A court can impose a fine of at least $10,000 per unit of the housing development project if we don't follow SB 330. And a city can be required to pay attorney's fees and costs of the prevailing party in that case. So it's very important that we get it right, which is why we take it so seriously. Last slide. With that, I conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Joe, thank you very much. Very detailed presentation. We appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Joe, when was that sunset again, 2025?
January 1, 2025. There is already some bills in the works, not necessarily to extend it, but that essentially codify what is going to sunset.
Sure.
So we're monitoring that closely to see what the impact of that is. So by its express terms, it expires January 1, 2025, but it's very likely that there'll be some continuation of it via new bill.
Yeah. We've heard 2030 is likely to be extended until...
Yeah, okay. I also appreciate your clip art. Thank you. Yes, that was...
Subject matter a little bit entertaining, so...
And Greg, your point, we will hear for years and years, we'll be hearing about this. Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
Yes, Joe, thank you for your presentation. It was actually quite enjoyable. I wanted to ask about design standards. A limitation is that the design standards must be objective. Who decides what's objective and what's subjective?
So that's a good question. I don't know if you were going to...
Well, I'll jump in. If you recall, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. I think it was either March or April. It was June. Trying to go back. Either March or April, we brought an ordinance for your recommendation to the city council on objective design standards. So we have, I think it took effect the first week of June. So we have objective design standards that you made recommendations on, that we basically took the community design guidelines and made it, turned it into a checklist format. Used the guidelines as the basis for that. So we have now a set of objective design standards that the council has adopted, is in effect. And if an applicant with a qualified affordable housing project, which has to have a minimum of 20% of the units are affordable, at the 80% or below area median income, and they meet all of the criteria in the objective design standards. And so, for instance, while we can't say what paint colors, we can say they have to have a minimum of a certain number of paint colors so that we have a base color trim, siding, a certain number of materials. They have to meet certain setback requirements, height limitations, parking requirements, et cetera. So we have a set of codified objective design standards for qualified affordable housing projects that are in place. So that has been, you know, we made the recommend, we recommended, you make the recommendation to the council, they adopted those. So those are set. We haven't had any projects yet that have asked to take advantage of it. It's brand-new, we're hoping. We have a project that was submitted before that ordinance took effect that's 100% affordable housing project, that we are working with the applicants to see if they can't make a few little modifications that would make us comfortable saying that they meet the objective design standards, and then we can approve it at that level. Basically, what that approval is, it's what we would call a zoning clearance. It's a staff-level ministerial, no public hearings, no noticing. You meet the criteria on the checklist. We check the boxes, sign a form, and you go get your building permit.
And that would be within 60 days?
Yeah, we, yeah, yes, yes. Now, what we're trying to do with applicants, because a lot of our, because it's a brand-new program, and applicants are used to coming in, going through the design review permit process, and getting their conditions of approval. And we found that a lot of the conditions of approval that we put on projects, that you ultimately put on projects, if you read through them from Environmental Utilities or Public Works or the Engineering Department, they're really, they're not unique conditions of approval, they're city standards. They're the requirements that somebody would be, need to comply with to meet city standards when they came in for their building permits or civil improvement plans, regardless. So we've been working on a process for folks that think they want to take advantage of the objective design standards to come in, talk to us, talk to all of the other city departments, and get the... departments, and get the, here's the standards that Environmental Utilities is going to expect, here are the standards that Public Works or Engineering is going to expect, fire, et cetera. Because we would hate for somebody to come in, meet our design standards, go get their civil improvement plans, and have the engineering folks say, your driveway's in the wrong location, you need to move it 50 feet, and that makes the whole thing, you know, all the construction documents shift.
That's pre-application?
That's gonna, it's gonna be a pre-application to get those comments. And then if they, once they know what all of the city standards they have to meet are, then they can make sure their project complies with the objective design standards. And then planning entitlement, the planning entitlement is a ministerial approval. So that is, that, you know, until we go through one, until we have one that successfully goes through that process, I can't tell you how it's gonna work. You know, we think it's gonna work fine. I just, I want to make sure that we are cognizant of the applicant's needs. So, you know, when they spend the money to do construction documents, to submit building permit, for building permits and civil improvement permits, there's not a gotcha out there or a uh-oh, that they missed something. So we realize that, you know, sure, they can come in, and the design and the setbacks all works for us, for the planning, for the objective design standards, but we have other city standards that they have to comply with. So we're close.
That timescale of 60 days, does that include sending back comments and going back and forth?
Well, I think, the way I envision it happening is, once they submit their plans and say, here's our plans for objective design standards, yeah, we'll be able, I mean, we're not gonna, we'll review the document, say, yes, you're compliant with the objective design standards. They're gonna know ahead of time, before they submit their application. So I don't have any concerns meeting the deadline. I'm more concerned with making sure they have information ahead of time, so when they put their package together, when they put their plans together, they know everything that's in front, an applicant knows everything that they're facing. I just don't want them to be surprised by a standard or, that, you know, I mean, paint color and materials, I mean, that's easy, you know, that's not a dramatic change to your document. Moving your driveway, or your, you know, sewer line connection, or water line connection, or whatever, the physical infrastructure, anything that they have to design around, they need to know that as soon as possible.
My other question was about health and safety standards. They must be narrowly construed?
Yes.
What does narrowly construed mean?
It means you have to take the most narrow interpretation of that. So for example, you know, you can't be kind of general like, well, I think that the design of this will make the neighborhood, you know, dangerous. It's gotta be very narrow. You've got to be able to articulate exactly why you think that design makes it dangerous. So it's dangerous because it provides line-of-sight problems. And so it has to be very specific. And then even then, when we, if such a standard is imposed, if there was a challenge, courts or HCD will look at it and give the most narrow interpretation. So it's kind of like a tie goes to the runner sort of situation. So if it's borderline, it'll likely go to the applicant, because it's meant to be as narrowly applied as possible. So you really have to use those objective standards, and they have to be very specific in order for them to apply.
So you have to have evidence that the project design, you know, direct, specific evidence that the project design is gonna lead to some health or safety issue. And the way we, the way we plan here in Roseville, I don't see us ever being able to make that finding. You know, especially with the specific plans, all of the sites are already, have already been predetermined to be adequate for high-density housing. I mean, because what we're talking about here is high-density housing. It'd be really difficult to say that you could design a project that, we would come up with some piece of evidence that would directly tie it to creating a health and safety risk. And then just, yeah, I can't fathom how that could happen.
And then in the actual text of the legislation, it talks about that specific adverse impact upon a public, based on public health and safety, and they actually give a specific definition. And the legislature says a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written public health and safety standards, policies, or conditions. So it's a very, very narrow, very, very specific set of findings that have to be made to meet that definition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So for this item, we will now open public comment, and public comment may be given by calling 916-774-5353. And as a reminder, you will have five minutes to address the commission on this item. Greg, we'll give it our standard time for phone calls.
Chair Bishers, there's no phone comment for this item.
Great, thank you, Greg. And I will now close the public comment. Joe, I want to thank you again for your detailed presentation. I always appreciate a good baseball reference thrown in there, so the tie goes to the runner anytime. Commissioners, any further comments or discussion on this item? Okay. Item 7.2, election of the Planning Commission Chair. I will now open public comments and ask Greg again if there are any, anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on this particular item.
Okay.
I don't see anyone here. Great, thank you. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and open up for commissioner discussion and ask if we have any...
I'll make a motion.
We'll jump right to that.
Motion to elect Vice Chair Jensen as chair.
I second that.
Commissioner Caparuso has made a motion, and Commissioner Pryor has seconded the motion. Lupe, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
And Chair Bishers.
Yes. The motion is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda, 7.3, election of the Planning Commission Vice Chair. And again, we will open public comment and give it some time for phone calls.
Chair Bishers, there's no phone call, public comments for this item.
Thank you, Greg. I will now close public comment and ask if there's any discussion from fellow commissioners or if someone would like to make a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to elect Commissioner Martin to vice chair.
I'll second.
Commissioner Caparuso has made the motion, and Commissioner Covington has seconded the motion. And Lupe, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
And Chair Bishers.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 7.4, appointment of the Design Committee Chair.
Chair Bishers, there's no public comment on this item.
Thank you, Greg. I will now close public comment period and ask again if there's any commissioner discussion or if someone would like to make a motion.
I make a motion that we elect Commissioner Pryor to the Design Review Chair.
I second.
Vice Chair Jensen, for the last time, has made the motion, and Commissioner Martin has seconded the motion. Lupe, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
And Chair Bishers.
Yes. And item 7.5, appointment of the Design Committee alternate. And again, Greg, we'll open it up for public comment.
Chair, there's no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Greg. I will now close the public comment period and ask my fellow commissioners if they'd like to discuss or make a motion at this time.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we elect Commissioner Covington as the alternate for the Design Review Commission.
I second that.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Pryor has seconded the motion. Lupe, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Caparuso?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
And Chair Bishers.
Yes, this motion is approved. Are there any final questions or comments from the commission this evening?
I'll make one real quick, since it's your last meeting as the chair. I just want to let you know how much I've appreciated you this past year, which has been extremely difficult in handling these meetings via Zoom. I didn't envy you at any of those meetings, and you handled them brilliantly. And I look at Commissioner Caparuso, who had prior six months of doing the same thing, and I'm just amazed at the job both of you did, and I've got big shoes to fill in stepping in, and I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the commission.
Appreciate that, Vice Chair Jensen. Any other comments?
I echo those sentiments. He also has new shoes, so he's got new shoes to fill.
I'm wearing new shoes tonight, so, yeah, what size are you?
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, I just want to take a second to say thank you to my fellow commissioners and to our incredible staff. It has been a challenging year, one that nobody anticipated, and we all had our moments with internet issues and, you know, just trying to get through. I think, you know, you guys did an incredible job in adapting, in preparing us as well as you could. And to my fellow commissioners, you know, you were there, you were engaged, you were supportive. It was difficult. I enjoyed my time as chair, and I am absolutely enjoying my time on this commission, and so I just want to say thank you.
Chair Bishers, if I might jump in? I want to say I appreciate all your work this last year, too, because, and all, in the entire commission, you know, the whole virtual meeting was difficult. I think the last virtual meeting we had was one of the more frustrating ones for myself, and so it didn't end, or it ended right on time, as far as I was concerned, maybe one meeting too long in the virtual world. But I appreciate you being available and making sure that, you know, as we work through all the issues, you know, you really helped, you all helped support us, but Chair Bishers helped support us and make sure that we were able to get all the city's business done. And so I want to say thank you, but I also want to extend your chairmanship for just a few more minutes, because I have some items to report out to the commission.
Oh, we're not done yet.
So you're not quite off the hook yet.
Sure.
The City Council last night was very busy with items that are of interest to the Planning Commission. They appointed Rex Clark as a Design Committee member last night. They reappointed Commissioner Covington to the Planning Commission. So congratulations, we're happy about that. And they also appointed Charles Kravka as a replacement. Cliff Hagagnos was elected to replace Commissioner Kravka. So we will have, as soon as we get Cliff, or Commissioner Hagagnos sworn in, we will have a full seven-member commission again. So all the positions will be full. Also, last night, the City Council heard the Fittiman Bungalows project on appeal. They denied the appeal and approved the project, so that project is approved and moving forward. They, two other items that you took action on, the Atkinson Storage Project, they approved the rezone for that item, and then they approved the Development Agreement Amendment for the Barbaccia Development Agreement out in the Sierra Vista specific plan. So they did those. Coming up, we do have meetings on July 22nd and August 12th, and as you know, the housing element will be on the 22nd. So we'll be getting that to you, and it looks like we have at least two items on the August 12th agenda at this point. One final thing I just wanted to let you know, since we just ended the fiscal year and the city, we track our single-family residential building permits on a fiscal-year basis, July 1st through June 30th. I thought this might be of interest to you all. We issued 1,806 single-family permits in that 12-month period. There are only two years in the city's history where they exceeded that number, 1999 and 2003. And I think 2003, it was just a little over 2,100 units. So our average for the past decade has been right around 900 units, and we doubled that in the last nine months. So pretty significant growth in the single-family sector. And I think this next year, you're going to see some pretty high numbers in the multifamily sector as well, based on the projects that you have approved recently. So I just wanted to leave you with a little data on, when you drive out to the west portion of the city of Roseville, it goes a little further than it did last year or the year before. So with that, that's all I have to report out tonight.
Yeah, I still remember prior to being a commissioner and taking a tour out there. And now, you know, my son's going to high school out there, and we get out, and just how far it goes, it blows me away, still to this day. Yeah, I just noted to myself, coincidentally, my last, my first in-person meeting as chair is also my last meeting as chair. So it's really great to see you all in person. Most of you are much better-looking in person, but some of you should stick to zoom.
It's the lighting, it's all about the ring light.
Yeah, it's the lighting, it bounces right off my head. If there are no further comments or questions or discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Caparuso has made the motion, and Vice Chair Jensen has seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all very much.